I'd like to call to order the March first, 2022 workshop. Jenny, will you take roll call?
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Acting Mayor Peterson?
Here.
And Mayor Furlong is absent.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Can I have somebody adopt the agenda? I get a motion to adopt, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion, any opposition? Motion passes. Wait a second, either one. They were summited honestly. City Manager John, do you want to introduce our guests tonight?
Yes, thank you, Acting Mayor Peterson. We do have several topics tonight, a couple of presentations, and then a parking lot discussion. So our first presentation is from our Met Council Representative, Sue Vento. And I'll let Sue, I told her she could sit or stand, it's at her discretion.
I think I'll stand so I can see everybody. If I sit, I'll be looking mostly at the cabinet. Thank you, thank you, this is. Oh, well, yeah, I'll take credit for it. We get hit on a lot for a lot of things, so I'll take credit for the weather on behalf of the council. Good evening, it's good to see you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. It's just temporary.
We see each other on RCLLG Zoom, so in the Zoom world. My name is Sue Vento, I'm your Met Council rep. I was here pre-COVID, so it's been a while, and it's great to be back. I want to just give a little bit of an update. I don't have a lot to report, but mostly I want to listen to see if there's anything I can be doing to help. Just as a little background, I was appointed in winter of 2019. I have to really kind of roll back the clock here in my head. It's, everything's pre-COVID, post-COVID, so it was pre-COVID. March of 2019, I started. I get to represent you along with 13 other communities, 12 cities, two townships, going from Lynwood Township up just west of Stacy, although I don't represent Stacy or Forest Lake, and then straight down to the south end of Maplewood. The cities and townships I represent include a portion of Anoka, a portion of Washington, and then a chunk of Ramsey. So it's a geographically big district, and it's population-wise, it's a big district. I actually did a little tabulation recently to see how many residents there were. I got to begin by just saying, I am awestruck with everything you all have going on in North St. Paul. Although I live in Maplewood, I'm up here a lot. I have an 11-year-old Maltese poodle, and his vet is located here in North St. Paul. And just both commercially and residentially, you've just been knocking it out of the park, so I want to congratulate you. As you already know, your 2040 comp plan was approved. You guys did a great job on that, along with your awesome staff. You're a Livable Communities Act participant, and we will have some grant information coming in the next few weeks, so there will be LCA grants available again. We are asking, well, we will also have some, we also have some water efficiency grants. So if you have residents here who are looking for ways to buy new appliances for their homes, water-producing appliances for their homes, if you apply for the grant, there's the opportunity for your residents to get credits for their appliance purchases that save water. It's a program that a number of communities have used and have found very popular. And this is available through our Environmental Services Division at the council. And you can either contact me or contact the Environmental Services Division directly. There will also be the regional solicitation grant funding cycle going here. It's a two-year cycle, occurs every two years. We work with the Transportation Advisory Board in distributing the dollars. We're expecting more money this year than normally because of the federal infrastructure bill. And in addition to that, you've probably already heard about the COVID dollars that are coming through the Minnesota Department of Transportation. So all of those resources are helping a little bit, you know, not a lot, but as we know, every little bit helps. So that's some good news. Currently in the legislature, we're seeking $5 million for inflow INI programs and possible grants to reduce the amount of surface and groundwater that ends up in our waste system, waste treatment system. If we can come up with ways to catch that before it ends in the waste treatment system, it saves our waste treatment systems a lot of wear and tear and cost. And with the population growing the way it is, every way we, every way we can find to help kind of limit how much more we have to put into that infrastructure is beneficial. So capturing the surface and groundwater is a project that a few communities have tried, and actually, one here in this District 11 is Hugo. They have done some surface and groundwater capture and used it for irrigation and sprinkling systems for some of their residential areas. So if you're interested in that, that's also a wonderful opportunity, and we're hoping to get, to get that funding through the legislature. The other legislative piece that I want to make a push for is that the council works with and for the Metropolitan Parks and Open Space Commission, or as it's frequently known, MPASK. And MPASK works with the 10 regional park systems that represent the 56 regional parks we have here in the Twin Cities. It covers 50,000, excuse me, 54,000 acres, 400 miles of trails, including the wonderful gateway that goes right through here, and then eight special recreation features. 63 million people visit those parks and trails annually, so they are very popular. And we know that during the last two years, they've become even more popular, that parks and trails have really been a source of stress relief and socialization for folks during COVID. So we're asking for 3 million, or we're seeking 3 million, actually, I'm seeking more than that, we need more than 3 million, but that's a private agenda I've got going on my own, not on behalf of the council. So that's a little bit of what's happening at the legislature. We do have a dire need for bus drivers. We're looking for, we've had to cut back on our bus routes, both as a result of a decline in ridership, but even more significantly because of a need to get more bus drivers. So if you know of anyone in the community who is looking for a good job, there's a $1,000 hiring bonus, good benefits, good pay, and an important job. You know, they're the ambassadors many times for our community, both with new residents and long-term residents, and they really do make a difference. So if you know of anybody looking for a job, that's something to think about. So I'd like to listen and answer questions and. I think for Sue, off the top of your head. John?
I think, you know, speaking maybe a little bit on behalf of the city council, we, we had a council staff retreat a little while ago, and one of the topics that is really important to us is the interchange of Highway 36 and Century. And, you know, we, we really view that as a, as a regional asset, and we're hoping that there can be a lot of players at the table, including the Met Council.
And I've been at those meetings.
Yes, you have, yeah.
I was at, pre-COVID. I was at a meeting, oh, was it here? Near here, it might have been.
It was here.
It was here, yeah. And I remember eating a lot of popcorn that night as we were doing our mapping, but I'm, yes, the Met Council is very much a part of that, that discussion. And I have to tell you, I'm really impressed, A, with the legislators in this area who are really stepping up and helping advance it. You folks especially, I think North St. Paul was one of the best represented, represented communities at that initial meeting I was at, and I couldn't tell from our last Zoom one who all was there. But I'm also really, really impressed with the counties. I've had a lot of interaction with Ramsey County, because I live in Ramsey County, but I'll tell you, Washington County has really stepped up as well, and they especially, you know, have a lot to deal with as it relates to the impact of all that traffic on 36. So they're, they're with you on that as well. And I will tell you, the reason I was late is I made the mistake driving up here of thinking, oh, I'm going to Caribou, and I'm getting my tropical green iced tea. No problem getting through Caribou, but getting back on 120 is like taking your life in your hands. So I didn't have to go all the way to Montamita, I had to get back going south, but I felt like I almost was going to have to. So we're totally with you on that.
Yeah, and I knew you were, I just wanted to remind you how important it is to these folks.
Yes, yeah, you can, you can count on us with that. And frankly, the, the, the bus transit has been a part of the conversation with it as well. We know that there are folks that rely on, you know, transit to 3M, transit to Century, transit to downtown North St. Paul. So, you know, our bus line on there will be important. Just recently, there was a really horrid, serious accident. A pedestrian was, was killed just north of 94 on 120. So the need for the safe transit for pedestrians and bicyclists is important.
Do you, do you have, is there maybe a link or something that has ridership data from Metro Transit specifically for North St. Paul, or is there any kind of?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilmember Thorson, I'll, I'll find out. I know we do have ridership data, but I don't know if it's broken down by community, but I'll see what I can find out. And I should be able to get that data. I don't know if it's available online, but I will definitely check. That's a great question.
Well, because obviously, it's been impacted by COVID, but it'd be interesting, as we're coming out of this and everyone's starting to go back to normal, if we could compare pre-COVID and then after, kind of monitoring that to see, you know, that impact that's had.
That's a great question, and I will definitely find out. I recently had a neighbor in my neighborhood ask me why we have empty buses driving around. And I said, well, we try not to, and we've been cutting back on that because we've had to. But I said, one of the things you need to realize is that those buses sometimes arrive much fuller than they look after people get off. And I described how one morning, I happened to have a very early vet appointment with my dog, and on my way home, I was struck as I went down McKnight by the number of bus stops where there were a lot of people waiting for their buses. And I hadn't seen that before, and it was kind of showing up at a different time of day. So, you know, that, that transit information is invaluable, and I'll do what I can to get you some good information for North St. Paul.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, Sue. You look like you're gonna, you're in our corner, because we need all, any, all of the support.
Yes, well, you can count on it.
It's, it's, that Minnesota, that Department of Transportation is who we have to convince.
Well, and I will tell you, I was really impressed with the meeting, that last meeting they put together. I thought it was really well done.
Yes, it was very good, they had a lot of facts, and I think we're not on the back burner, I'm hoping it's gonna.
Right, and that public engagement that night was phenomenal.
Yep.
That makes a big difference.
Yep. Very good, thank you for your time. Did you like to introduce them?
Sure, so our next presentation is from the League of Minnesota Cities. I would say it's part, kind of an update, and then partly a special presentation. And so I would introduce Steve Umack, the Executive Director of the League of Minnesota Cities, and he can introduce his team, and you guys can either approach the podium or, or chair is either one.
Staff, members of the council, Acting Mayor Candy Peterson, how about that?
Thank you, David.
Special time for.
I'm not nervous at all.
Aren't you nervous? Well, I'll call the question then. I understand this is a work session, so I'll be.
We're pretty informal.
Little, really informal. So my name is Dave Umack, as John said. I am the Executive Director of the League of Minnesota Cities, and I have with me the President of the League, Dee Love, who will speak second. He is the mayor of Centerville. And then I have the past President Brad Weirzum, who is the mayor of Minnetonka, and our ace in the hole, who does most of the work and gets us all ready to go, Luke Fisher is here. And he, he passed out the little gift bag that we have for you. So this all started two months ago when Luke and I were looking at the board roster at the league, and there's a few people on the board who are coming up on the end of their term. And during the course of our work, we get a chance to visit with many of our board members, depending upon their position and their role and what they do. And, and we knew that we had not been to the North St. Paul City Council meeting yet to, to thank Candy. And so I left a message for John, and I got this, I'm out of the office for a month, voicemail, one of those kind of things, actually, it wasn't, just a week. And I, and I said, give me a call when you get back, because I'd like to be able to come. Luke and I were going to stop by and surprise Candy with a thanks, and very brief, very informal. And John said, oh, by the way, we have a workshop, and there is an opening in the agenda, because someone that was here to present couldn't make it. Would you mind coming in to make a brief presentation about the league and do what you wanted to do with Candy? And of course, we were all over that, right?
Can I leave now?
Thank you, thank Candy, yeah, no. And so we thought, well, we can't do this without our leadership then. And then in a very quick email, we sent to Dee and Brad, they both said they can make it, so that's why you have four of us here today instead of two, so it's a little different, but we're going to accomplish the objective. So thank you very much for letting us be here, we really appreciate it. So the League of Minnesota Cities is a multifaceted, simple but complex organization, and we have a handout that has about eight pages of the many things that we do. We are the largest statewide city association in the state of Minnesota. There are other associations, you may have heard of them, the Metro Cities, there's the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, Minnesota Association of Small Cities, the last two you would not be part of for, for size and for location, but you certainly are a member of the league and have been a very active member of the league for many years. And we do a lot of things. We do advocacy, at the state and federal level, we provide research, member services, litigation support, and lead, we provide insurance services. And we are the go-to resource for cities that need, need an answer or need some help. And we get called by people every day, all day, for very simple questions or very complex questions. And I won't go into the details of that, because I know Dee and Brad want to say some things, but I thought that would be a really good resource for you if you're curious or you have not been active involved in the league before. Given that, we are here because one member of your council has been very active with us, has been an asset, been a resource, a wonderful addition to our board, and a great person. And because of all that, we wanted to come here and thank her for that. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dee, he's going to talk a little bit, then he'll turn it to Brad, and then Brad will turn it back to me, and we will close. So thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Well, thank you, North St. Paul, for having us this evening. It's so great to be here. We thank you for the time on your agenda. As Dave noted, my name is Dee Love, and I'm the mayor of the city of Centerville, and I am your president this year, so very proud to be that. I can't say thank you enough to Candy, though. I know I'm going off script, Luke, sorry about that, but I could not come up here and say words without saying, thank you so much, Candy. So there, you know, there's a lot of things about Candy that we want to recognize, but I want to point out three.
Oh, boy.
Number one, Candy brings treats to every meeting. I mean, and you know.
I don't go out here, guys.
Before I went on vacation, I was on a sugar-free diet, and you bring me treats, and it was so hard, because it sat there in front of me the entire meeting, and I just pushed it over to Brad, so it was okay. But we definitely appreciate you always thinking of us and always being so giving in that way. Secondly, though, Candy is an incredibly caring person. I know during our time together on the board, there's been some things that have happened in my life, and lo and behold, I open up my mailbox, and there's a card from Candy. And I think, oh my gosh, I mean, she sent me a card. Who thinks to do that? And sometimes, even though the situations were going on for a long time, I got multiple cards, and I thought, does she know she already sent me one, or is she just really that nice? So I believe it's because you're just that nice, so I appreciate that so, so, so much. The final thing, though, is Candy has such a spirit. I mean, your spirit and what you bring to our board is immeasurable, and it's so appreciated by me and the other board members. Being, serving with you for the last three years, it's just been an absolute pleasure, it's been my pleasure, and I just want to say thank you for spending that time with us and me as a board member, so you're definitely appreciated.
Thanks, Dee.
All right, so now to get to my actual talking points. Cities are the core of everything that we do at the league. Our association is really, really strong, and the reason it is so strong is because of our board, people like Candy, Brad, and myself. Our legislative policy committees that a lot of people have an opportunity to apply for and be a part of. Conversations and event gatherings, hopefully everyone's coming up to Duluth in June, we look forward to seeing you there. And through meetings like this, you open up your city halls for us so that we can come out and speak to you and take questions and just have an opportunity to be face-to-face with each of you each time. But two big points I really wanted to spend a little extra time focusing on tonight is PTSD for our first responders and civility. Those have been two things that have been really near and dear to me, so I just wanted to take a couple of moments to talk about it. When it comes to PTSD, our police and fire and emergency responders, they play a vital role in each one of our communities. They protect and provide public safety when we need it. And in all honesty, when we're at their, when we're at our worst, we need them to be at their best, and we expect that from them. But we know that first responders sometimes have issues with mental illness and PTSD. And one of the important things that we're trying to really do right now is remove the stigma about that. You know, in the past, first responders, especially police officers, I'll, I'll point that out, you know, that was a tough community. That was a community that just kind of put everything to the side and said, we got this. And now we know that, you know, it wasn't always the case. Sometimes we didn't just have this, and we need help. And it's okay to say, I need help. And we want to make sure that that stigma is removed. We're working with a lot of different member organizations to create toolkits, to go to our legislature, to address the issue, to just really try to help our first responders, so that when it is time for them to respond, they can, and that they can get back to the jobs that they really love, instead of having that stress of not being able to work as a result of this, this illness that is treatable and curable. The second thing, and the last thing I wanted to talk about, is civility. Now, that's something that all of us around the country have an opportunity to have an impact on. We have that chance to go out and say, it is not okay to be incivil, it is not okay to not be respectful, it's not okay not to listen to one another. Those are all things that we all have human rights to do, and it seems odd to say, boy, we're going to push back against people being incivil. But I think it's our right to say, we want to push back against people being incivil. We want to be civil, we want to provide an example. And I think here in Minnesota, we have an opportunity to lead the country back in the right direction that we want to go. So with that, I again want to say thank you for allowing us to come out tonight, thank you Candy, again, for being a part of our board, and I'm going to turn it over to past President, Mayor of Minnetonka, Brad Weirzum.
Hi, Brad.
Thank you all, thank you for having us, thank you. Dee, Mr. President, we call him Mr. President, he likes that. You only get it one year, and it goes quick, and we were talking about that, so anyway, but thank you for your comments, Dee, and it's, it's great to be here. And my, my piece of the puzzle is that I get to talk a little bit about Candy. And I've known Candy for a long time, because I remember when, well, it wasn't that long ago, that Candy became a member of the league board. But Candy and I also worked on the Metro Cities Board together a number of years ago. And Candy's a pretty spectacular person, I've really enjoyed working with her. I like, I like the fact that she tells you what she thinks. She doesn't pull any punches, she's honest, she's a straight shooter. You know, this is a people business. What we do as the league is we work with people in 850-plus cities across the state. But this is a people business, and Dee talked about civility, and civility is so important. But we're also such a polarized society now, but if, if we, if we just listen to one another and respect one another as people, then, then we're going to do a better job. We're going to do a better job as council members, we're going to do a better job as cities. And, and Candy has just been an outstanding example of that. Now, you know, her name is Candy, and she shares Candy with, with the board, and that's, that's, that's a good marketing approach, and I'm a marketer by training, so I appreciate that. But Candy is really a special person, and I've really enjoyed working with her. And, you know, in Candy's time on the board, we've done, it's been, it's been a heck of a time to be on the board. We've, we've lived through a, and it's, it's been a heck of a time to be a council member in North St. Paul and all of our cities. The pandemic has been brutal, and this has been a people business, and yet we haven't seen one another. We've been, we've been behind Plexiglas, we've been behind masks, and we've, we've had virtual meetings. And so in a people business, you know, keeping, keeping the train on the tracks under those circumstances is challenging. But Candy always lightens things up at the meetings, and always found a way to make us smile, and, you know, and she'd grumble about her golf game every once in a while, but, you know, that's okay, that's just, that's just, that's just part of it. One of the things that's happened, and, you know, when the pandemic hit, let's be honest, we didn't know how our finances as cities were going to be and how our finances at the league were going to be. I mean, it was a challenging time, it wasn't a time to ask residents for more taxes or members for more money, but we've maintained strong finances as the league through, through the pandemic, and the league's board and Candy has been a part of that. And I'm proud of what the league has been able to accomplish through the pandemic. And then the other thing is that we've, we've supported one another. And I will tell you, and I will encourage you to, if, if you're not involved with the league at all, to get involved. It's been one of the most rewarding aspects of public service for me, and I know Candy's, Candy's enjoyed it. But again, it's the people that make it great, and, and the people who get on the league board are really pretty spectacular people, and the league staff and the organization are outstanding. So I'm, I'm really proud of that, but I'm thankful for Candy and for all of the league board members for the way that we've supported each other and encouraged each other. And I have to ask you a question, I have something in my pocket here, and Dee referenced it a little bit, but, you know, how many of you have ever gotten one of these? You know, and, and I've gotten, I've gotten numerous of these, you know, they all seem to come from the same person. But I can't tell you how much it means, I mean, as, you know, Dee had had a challenging year last year with his family, and Candy's encouragement meant a lot to him, I know it did. And, you know, Candy finds a reason to thank you and to congratulate you, and, and I'll tell you what, I hang on to these, it means a lot to me. And I didn't have to look very far to find this when I knew I was coming here tonight, because I saved it, because I really appreciate what Candy represents. So, you know, we are a better organization because of the people that make us, and Candy has been just an outstanding and stellar representative of the city of North St. Paul, of the league, and I personally have just greatly enjoyed working with her. So I want to, Candy, I want to thank you so much, it's been fun, it will continue to be fun, we're not done yet. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Thank you, Brad.
One of the reasons that it's great to be a staff member of the league is because we get to work with excellent people. And on our board are elected officials and appointed officials. And most of them are elected, but there are some appointed officials too, so you got a little flavor today of three of the people I get to work with every day, and that's Dee Love, Brad Weirzum, and Candy Peterson. And they're just the best and the brightest this state has to offer for leaders and people who care about this state and local government. And Luke Fisher and I are privileged to work at this organization, we are privileged to have gotten to know you. And it was important for us to come and say that to you, to your peers, and to your community and city, you mean a lot to us, and you've done a lot, and you've added a lot of value. And Dee Love says it very well, he says, we're stronger together. And Brad Weirzum said, we're better because of you, and I think that's a good way to capture the essence of what we're here for. And so one of the things that we wanted to do as a team is to see if there are any questions about the league or anything we do, or any, any curiosity about what we do, and also give Candy, obviously, a chance to, to respond. But, so that's it for formalities, but we're here for questions or discussion or any other content you might want to have about the work that we do as an organization. Thank you.
You mean Luke's not going to have a shot at me? Good, fine, fine, thank you. Does anybody have any comments? I love the league, I, like Brad said, it's probably my pinnacle of my public service. I just, I've learned a lot, they're knowledgeable, you call them, they answer your questions, they reach out. I had mentioned that Joe Emerson, a longtime member of White Bear Lake, had a retirement party, they showed up. It was cold out in December, it was a couple of weeks before Christmas, and they showed up, and she loved it. So, I mean, it's a family, and it's a people business. It's, it's, you know, I'm going to miss you guys, but I know I can, I'm just a phone call away. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm a newer elected, elected, and I'm just curious on what this June conference will be like? Okay, okay. Asked the right question.
Thank you so much, Lisa.
Yep.
I'm Luke Fisher. I'm deputy director at the league, and I'm a Candy enthusiast, too. So happy to be here tonight. But our annual conference is a chance for elected and appointed officials from across the state to come together, to learn with each other, to network with each other, and hopefully to grow and develop as leaders. Our program this year is coming together quickly. It'll be at the end of June, June 24th through 26th, if I remember right offhand. But we're really, 22nd to 24th, this is why Candy is a great board member. But our programming this year focuses a lot on the things that we've already talked about tonight. Civility. Braver Angels will be there. They're a group that works across the country on helping elected officials with different ideas have better conversations with each other. That's important. We've got programming around diversity and equity and inclusion. We've got stuff on leadership, crisis communication, and, and just being a better city official. So there's a lot to do there, and we're really proud of the programming that we have and the program that we're putting together. But just as, as important as all of that is the conversations that you have in between and the chance you have to be inspired by your colleagues and other officials from across the state. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I look forward to it.
Perfect. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for coming out, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, acting mayor and members of the council. This next item for the workshop here tonight is follow-up staff with city councils. So you may recall, discussion within the surface lot, the city's surface lot, that is scheduled for pavement and utility improvements this summer in 2022, was discussed by the council previously, and council asked staff to take a look at opportunities for enhancing pedestrian access through the parking lot as a potential thing that could be included in the improvement project this summer. And so, in your packet is a brief memo that just kind of outlines some of the differences that would be, or impacts, I guess, if you want to look at it that way, that could be a part of making that change, which it's a fairly simple change, so there shouldn't be any concern about making that change, even though, you know, the, the design is essentially finished and we're ready to start construction. But it is something that could be implemented fairly easily. And there's also two layouts within your packet. So the first layout is kind of the existing design as it stood before we looked into this enhancement from a pedestrian or non-motorized standpoint. And then, the second layout is what staff would be recommending for that actual pedestrian throughway. So I might, while you might look at the, the layouts, I'll just reiterate what's in the memo. The original parking lot design expanded the number of parking lot stalls within the surface lot from 146 to 164, so that's an increase of 18 stalls. It's pretty significant. It's pretty rare when you kind of reconfigure a public parking lot, a surface lot, that you're able to find that much efficiency, I guess, to be able to add that many spots. And that was kind of the task at hand originally, when we started looking at this, knowing that there, with the increased development downtown, there's an increased need for public parking both now and into the future as well, too. So that was kind of what we were trying to do originally. Now, this second option, which includes some pedestrian provisions within the parking lot, still increases the number of stalls from what is out there today. So that's certainly a positive, but it does sacrifice some parking. So instead of adding 18, it reduces that number by nine. So it's an increase from 146 stalls to 155, so 11 total stalls would be, I'm sorry, nine total stalls would be the increase. So slightly less. We'd still have an expansion of surface parking, surface public parking in the parking lot. We still would have an enhancement from an ADA parking standpoint, approach within the parking lot from what's out there today. So that's another enhancement that doesn't, isn't really affected by this pedestrian way. But if you turn your attention to the layouts, I guess, what I'll point out from a design aspect, it's fairly simple and straightforward. But in what we're, what we're labeling on that layout is the Seventh Avenue Alley, which is the alley, which is on the, the backage of those buildings that front on Seventh Avenue. We do need sufficient width out there, which it doesn't really have today. It's kind of ill-defined today, I guess, is what I found in looking at the existing condition. But we want to maintain at least a 22-foot through lane width through there for two-way traffic. That's still kind of on the tight side, I guess, you know, standard parking lot design, two-way traffic. We might see a 24-foot, although in recent trends towards lane widths has, have been narrower, just to kind of bring things into the modern age. And so, we're trying to apply that here. So 22 feet is kind of a bare minimum that I'm comfortable with for two-way traffic in the alleyway. And then, if we were to provide some sort of a kind of dedicated area for pedestrians to walk in, that would be five feet in addition to that, or next to that, or, I'm sorry, five or six feet. We may have made it, no, it was five. So just to keep things as tight as possible. So once you move in that five feet, that does impact some of those stalls. We're kind of at an angle, so the impact is not linear. You kind of clips, clip stalls off of the edge of that alleyway there. That's where we lose about half of the stalls that we would actually add from the kind of original design from existing to future, once we're done with the project this summer. So with that, what I would say is that it's a fairly easy change and almost negligible from a cost standpoint if you take the approach to just stripe out that pedestrian way, which is a reasonable approach. I've seen that done in school parking lots and other parking lots, to just give people a place that's not, you know, at the edge of the drive aisle or in the middle of the driveway aisle or wherever people want to walk. It gives them a place. It's not really shown on the figure here, but, you know, either through signage or maybe some symbols on the pavement, it could be fairly, made fairly clear that that's where you should walk if you're going to be walking in and out of the lot, either to Margaret Street downtown or to the other direction. And there are some kind of cut-through driveways. I mean, pedestrians might want to cut through to Seventh Avenue on the east or northeast corner of the lot, too. You don't really know exactly how it's going to get used. But it would allow for people to not have to walk, like, in the alley, for example, or on the edge of the alley. So it is a, it's, it is better from a pedestrian standpoint. Now, if, and that would be also easy from a maintenance point of view from Public Works. I mean, snow removal wouldn't really be impacted. It would simply be paint on the ground, easy to maintain. If the paint needs to be refreshed, that's something that Public Works could easily do generally without having to hire a contractor, is freshen up those, those paint markings. It does just slide some of those islands over, but it doesn't mean that we need to take out the electric vehicle chargers that Electric Department is planning on doing, and it doesn't minimize the number or reduce the number of handicap stalls at all. If you were going to take it a step further, I guess, to address the fact that that same area is generally where the low spot of the parking lot is, and that's where the water runs, and we might have, like, in a springtime situation where the snow is melting and maybe it rains, or we have some sleety conditions, maybe it's not the most ideal place to walk. Now, so that's not necessarily a requirement, but in those low areas, we could add some concrete pavement at a little bit of additional extra cost, just to kind of raise up that walkway out of kind of the low spot. So if, if it was raining or if there was standing water, it would sheet off of that area where people would be walking and wouldn't be as prone to, like, icing up or something like that in the winter. So that would kind of be my recommendation. I think I, I said approximately $50,000. I think it could be done for less than that. I mean, that would be something that I would try to get done for less than that. But if you wanted to make that enhancement, that might be a good thing, just so we didn't have any kind of future issues with, as I said, standing water in an area that's kind of dedicated for people to be walking in. Right? So with that, I'll stand for any questions. That's kind of the overview and the facts here, and staff is ready to make whatever adjustment the council would like, given kind of that state of the parking lot, I guess, if you will, in terms of making that pedestrian enhancement.
Excuse me. Yeah, on both of these designs, these islands, are they, I mean, there's, looks like there's one that's got, like, dots in it. Is that indicating it's grassed? And then others, there's just lines. Is that just flush with the, with the parking lot? And then this one that, this, this other end where there's no lines, is that just a concrete? Is that how I'm interpreting that, or?
Yeah, so there's actually, yeah, you're actually picking up exactly what's going on here. So there's three different types of islands, if you will. So the hatching, and that's, the hatching is not to scale, but that would be paint that's surface, you know, asphalt paved. It's hatched so that people don't park there, but it's also much easier to maintain for Public Works, which was one of the other goals, kind of in terms of how to redo this parking lot, such that snow removal could be conducted where you just, you know, plow right through that, right? In the lower left-hand corner, the southwest corner of the lot, there's two islands that have dots, as you mentioned. Those are actually raised with curb around them and then concrete. And at least one and possibly both of those will have the EV chargers located in them, so they need to have kind of a raised area to protect those, that kiosk. And there may, we may need to add some bollards as well, too. That will be kind of up to, to the Electric Department to install that after the fact, and then we would pour concrete kind of around that kiosk as well. And then, in the lower right-hand corner, which is the southeastern corner of the lot, and there's a, it's kind of a slope there, and there's a tree now here today. So that actually is getting reconfigured as well to try to add parking as much as we can in that corner. That's one of the places where we, we were able to actually add stalls. And so, that is raised up as well, but that is going to be, at least for now, the idea is for it to be landscaped. We don't have that scheduled for concrete. There's a, there would be a concrete maintenance border around the outside, which will keep, you know, dirt or mulch or whatever might be in there from falling out onto the pavement. But other than that, that would be an opportunity for a little bit of greenery or landscaping, but something that would be low maintenance, you know, wouldn't have to be mowed, wouldn't have to be pruned or anything like that. That would be the idea.
In those areas where the proposed EV chargers are, those just aren't large enough to have, like, a tree in the middle of it or something, you know? I mean, it just seems like, it seems like we were trying to get away from just paving everything, and if we can, you know, add some sort of landscaping or trees, obviously help, you know, with shade and water absorption, and, I don't know. I just, I guess that was my question, is, is there, what's the landscaping plan for these islands? If any.
Yeah, so there's, there is no landscaping plan right now, because the idea was to make it low maintenance and make it as easy to maintain as possible. So the existing configuration with the grass islands is very difficult for Public Works to keep looking nice, both from a snow removal standpoint and also, as I understand it, mowing the grass on, you know, something that's maybe 300 or 400 square feet and not only doing it in one location, but having to do it in multiple places throughout the lot. So they wanted something that was going to be easy to keep looking nice and keep functional in the wintertime, when it's time to keep the snow off it. If the council wants to direct the addition of some landscaping in, you know, one or both of these raised islands, or even in the other, the islands, I mean, I'll take that direction. It would go against kind of the direction I got from Public Works, was to try to enhance the ease of maintenance.
Well, I guess that would be my opinion, it would be, I mean, and as someone who used to be tasked with having to mow those islands, I would agree, it's a huge pain in the butt, and it, they never end up looking nice. There's just ruts getting in them, and it's just basically a weed bed, but not particularly looking at grass, but just, you know, I mean, we plant trees in the boulevard, they, you know, they grow out of the concrete when they're surrounded by concrete. You know, it would just be nice to, if we're going to do this, to, to consider that, and we're talking about three smaller islands. You know, it doesn't seem like it'd be a huge financial burden.
I think the opportunity would be in the, in the, the western islands. I think a tree apiece could be added in there, not on the part of the island where the kiosk would be, which would be in the front of the stall, but in that kind of triangle that would be off to the side. So a typical kind of street tree or a downtown tree that you might see that could work within a tree grate or something like that, that could be worked into the, into the deck, I guess, if, that would be very easily, and like you said, pretty low cost. So I think there's an opportunity for a couple plantings there. And then, certainly, you know, trees, we can consult with Josh, the city forester, and see what kind of, you know, trees could be planted in that other island, so it's not just low vegetation. I mean, we could get some shade trees in there. The existing tree, as I understand, that's there in that, that southeast corner, is scheduled to come out, and I don't know exactly what the issue is with it. It might be ready or diseased or otherwise, but Public Works has taken a look at that. But, so if you're taking that out, nothing wrong with, you know, replacing that and letting those kind of, you know, grow in and replace the urban canopy, as it were.
Yeah, and I know Maplewood Mall did some extensive, you know, redoing of their parking lots, and I just drove by there today, and you can see where they placed these little trees in these low-lying areas where kind of water diverts or whatever. But, I don't know, it seems like that would be consistent with trying to, you know, go in that direction of having some green space type of thing. But as far as, you know, option A or B here, I guess I'm leaning more towards option A, where we have more parking stalls, because I kind of compare it to the, you know, if you go park at Target or Walmart or any large facility has a large parking lot, they don't have, like, a, a raised or even, you know, a designated walking path. You just kind of walk along the car lines and you're, you know, you gotta be mindful of traffic and cars backing in and out. So I don't really see the need to, to, to have a designated walking path to give up parking stalls, where that's always a concern. We're talking about parking and, and the need for additional parking. So I think in this case, I would be, my preference would be to, to go with that option A, the 164 total.
Anybody else on that?
Yeah, me.
Member Wong.
Thank you, Morgan, for putting up another option. And I would agree with council member Thorson in, in regards to the landscaping, trying to keep it a little bit green. As for which design, I'm, I'm a big proponent for the second one. I think it's consistent with our comp plan. We want to focus a little bit more on pedestrian. We want to focus a little bit more on pedestrian-friendly spaces, and if, if that's going to be our hotspot, we want people to walk in, so that's, that's all I got.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I'll take it. Again, very similar to, to Councilmember Wong and Thorson, I, I totally agree, we got some trees in there, just, just, it breaks up the, the sea of a parking lot, in my, it's my opinion. I, too, am, am an advocate of the sidewalk, in fact, I would like to see it with some type of an elevation, maybe similar to what was done on Lake, where they just kind of just put that little bit of curbing in there, so that you can still run the, the cleaning equipment across it for snow removal, but it just designates just a little cleaner line between where the cars go, and where, where residential walking is. My other question, though, Morgan, is, does this, I, I will call it the north side of the street, knowing that it doesn't run east-west, but the Seventh Avenue side of the, of the alley, does the city not have easements to some of that land over there, and could a sidewalk not be put on that side?
Councilmember Cole, so, we did look at that. As to the question of, does the city hold rights or easement there, you know, those are all, well, I shouldn't say that, they're not all zero setback, but some of the buildings do, are built like right to the property line, some, others are not, and there's a little bit of space, and some of the buildings, like, that's where they would put their trash container, or something like that, or maybe they, maybe they've got like one stall there for a, a delivery truck, or, you know, one employee can park a, a vehicle there. So, also, on that side, is where all the power poles are, and where all of the utility from electric and telecommunications, so like the phone and cable, they all, some of them go overhead into the building, some of them go down risers, that's, sounds dumb, down riser, they're called risers, that go on the side of the pole, but that's where some of the utility services would go, then underground, or wherever they're going. So that, plus the fact that there is a little bit of undulation there, and it just makes it a little bit tighter, I guess. Also, if you've got a kind of a dedicated pedestrian, pedestrian way at kind of the minimum width, if you're going to put it up against a wall, essentially, that kind of, you lose like a foot or two, because people aren't going to, you know, if they're, especially if they're passing one another, they're not going to walk right up against a wall, they're going to walk across the line, or they're going to walk where they're comfortable. So it does, just from a design aesthetic standpoint, it makes a little bit more sense to be away from the buildings, and that's why we kind of set on this alternative to recommend to, to you all.
Perfect, because I, I view this parking lot as, as having a lot of, a lot of parking for people heading to Seventh Avenue, or heading to Max when it opens, so your, you know, a lot of your traffic would be between cars and crossing aisles, and that was, that's my, one of my big proponents for, for putting a sidewalk or designated walk space.
Yeah, Morgan, can you, with the trees, I like that idea, too, and I am a proponent of the, the B proposal, can you just add that, I mean, I mean, can't be that much more money, but can you get some money, or what, what it'll cost?
Oh, yeah, and we might even be able to take, depending on what Josh Bond and Public Works would say, I mean, we do have the Arbor Day tree, give, there's, you know, Public Works has trees available, and we're not talking about a large number of trees that would take away from the public, that might be one option, or, I mean, essentially, the, you know, for a two-inch or a two-and-a-half inch caliper tree, which is what we would typically plant in a downtown urban setting like this, if you buy them bigger than that, they tend to not survive as well, right? So that's why we kind of stick with that, two, two-inch, two-and-a-half inch size. But they're not that expensive, I mean, it's, we're talking three hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars, I guess, to have it delivered, and planted, and have the contractor take care of it for a while, and we get a one-year warranty out of that, so if it dies in the first year, we can replace it the next year, under the contract warranty. So, we're not, if we added half a dozen, or even more trees total to the project, we're not talking about a significant change, and it's probably like a tenth of a percent of the total overall project cost to, to do that. I think, you know, and I'll have to ask the question, ask the council how we do it on time, so, is there a consensus in terms of, you know, option two or option one with the pedestrian way? And one council member mentioned that maybe an enhancement to kind of, like I said, an option for some raised concrete would be something, again, for, again, even if fifty thousand dollars on the high side is what we needed to do to add some concrete through there, that's a pretty small cost in relation to the overall cost of, of the, of the overall project, and certainly of the lot itself, so staff would welcome any direction the council would like to give on both of those points.
I welcome a raised, you know, pathway, walkway.
I agree, too, with that.
Okay.
Direction you needed?
I'm comfortable with that, if you guys are. Okay. We will make those changes, and that'll just become a part of the project. If there is a significant delta on the cost, I'll report on that at a later meeting.
The only other piece, Morgan, I don't see on here is lighting. And there could be these little blue spots that are on here, but looking at it on my screen, they're, they're very, very small, and it would be very difficult to read. My assumption is there's some type of parking lot lighting built into this plan?
Yep, so, the, the technical term on construction plans that we use is "by others", right? And so the "by others" is by, not by a contractor, but by the city's Electric Department. And so the Electric Director, Brian Frandl, has been working with me and my staff, so some of what will be a part of the lighting is, will be under the contractor's responsibility, that would be kind of installation of plastic conduit underground, those are easily, things that are easily done by a contractor that would be building a parking lot. But the things like the pulling the wire, and the energizing, and the setting of the transformers, and that sort of thing, those would be things that Brian's crew, or sometimes he hires a contractor, but he would be responsible for after the fact. So yes, absolutely, I mean, the current state of the lighting out there is not good, like, a couple of the lights don't work, they've been kind of temporarily rigged together. So, there will be all-new lighting, new bases, new standards and luminaires, I can't, I don't know the technic, technical term, but whatever the current standard for, you know, downlighting in parking lots that Brian is using now, I'm assuming they're LED lights, and more energy efficient, that that will be a part of the end result, they probably won't be, that, you know, that will be finished after the lot is constructed, so that might be towards the end of the summer, before we see that in there, but that is a part of the effort.
Sounds good. It's very well-needed, we really need it, so. Anything else? Also, Member Thorson?
Yeah, just quickly with the lighting, is there, is, is that lighting going to look like the design manual lighting, or is it, it's kind of a?
I'm going to, I'm going to speculate on where you're going with that, so the, the design manual might be more focused on what, what we call decorative streetlights, so like what you see up and down Seventh Avenue, so those are not, they're decorative streetlights, they're not like safety lighting, or what you might see in a parking lot. So they're, they're likely going to be a newer version of like a, we call it a cobra head, so it's up, and it kind of sticks over like a cobra head, and then shines down, so that type of a light, as opposed to like a decorative streetlight, just because it throws more light, it's more efficient that way, it's also a downlight, we do have some residential properties in the area that, you know, some of those decorative streetlights are not shielded, they kind of project out, so that's what I know about that, but if you, if you want more specifics, I'd have to have Brian report on that.
Well, maybe I would just ask, as you talk with Brian about the design and the lighting, just ask him if there is a, an opportunity to introduce a little bit of the decorative lighting, it might help to differentiate the pedestrian way, or in the islands, or something, so there may be a way of accomplishing both things.
Now that the pedestrian enhancement is in there, that's a perfect, perfect point, so I will do that, and have that discussion, and there might be an opportunity where some of those lights are of the acorn style, or something like that, that would fit into that.
Yeah, just to, wanted to clarify on those islands, then, I mean, obviously, there's consensus that we want to see some, you know, trees and, and landscaping type of thing, and, I mean, I would just encourage Public Works to look into, you know, options, staying away from as much concrete as possible, and just, like, I'm looking at a Google Maps overhead here of the existing islands, and it just looks like it's all concrete curbing, and it's grass in between, and then there's trees planted, but if we're planting trees, and we look at, instead of putting grass, like, you know, those decorative grasses that don't need to be mowed, or, or if it's, you know, perennial flowers, or what I know, that kind of adds to the, the green, North St. Paul Green, that volunteers to do that stuff, but maybe it's even stuff that's not needing constant weeding, and things like that, but I know there's options out there, I'm not a landscaping expert, but there's just got to be some other alternative to just concreting it, and I know that's probably Public Works preference, because that's the least maintenance, but, you know, we're trying to, you know, stick to their current plan goals, and, and we've talked about some of these things, with the redevelopment master plan, as far as downtown is concerned, and making it a little more attractive, so. And then also, kind of unrelated to that, but related to this lot, since we have half an hour, we got an email from a resident last week, and I know I forwarded it to, to city manager, I think it was addressed to all of us, about some residents that live around this parking lot, and they were inquiring about having permission to park their vehicles in the lot, because they just don't have space, because of however their lot's laid out, and they don't have a garage, and they don't have a driveway. And we have rules in place that prevent twenty-four-hour parking, especially in the winter, for snow removal, but just wondering if we had a chance to look into that, and if the city manager was able to respond to that resident, and if there's a solution to that, and?
Yeah, I don't have a final resolution, but there has been ongoing conversation between all the department heads, it really involves a, a couple of departments, and so Police and, and Public Works, so we will be getting back to the resident, I, I, actually, Morgan may have even been CC'd on some of that, so we're close to an answer, but we have not yet provided that.
Because I, my opinion on that is, I mean, obviously, we have concerns where we're not, we don't want to turn this into just, you know, everyone parks your trucks and vans and things, and lets it sit there. But, you know, if there's, if there's a reasonable request, and it's a resident that's, you know, actively moving their vehicles during snow events, and they're just looking for a place to park because they don't have it, I mean, it is a public parking lot, and it kind of seems, you know, we've had these rules in place forever about, you know, no parking past, you know, certain time, and, and things like that, and maybe that's just worth revisiting those policies, to see if they still make sense today. I don't know, that's just my opinion, is that it, it seems, you know, the request was reasonable, but I understand it's not our decision to make, but if, if it's, they're told no because of a, a policy that the council adopted, that we may be able to change, then maybe we should, you know, have some discussion about that.
Sure, and I guess I would commit that, I, I, I believe that the request was reasonable, too, and if we can't give them a reasonable answer, then I'll bring it back to you.
Anybody?
I, I, I'm glad we had the time, because that was top of, top of mind with me as well, was the email, because it didn't, didn't appear unreasonable, and when we have, you know, can't park on the streets, and you've got, you know, excessive vehicles, and you can't park in the front yard, you can't, we've got to have a place for them, but to, to Councilmember Thorson's point, it is, it is a slippery slope, how do you control it, how do you maintain it, how do you ensure that, you know, vehicles aren't there for, you know, extended periods of time? And as the Sentinel Building continues to fill up, and when it hits vacancy, I, my assumption is we'll have, could potentially have similar requests coming from residents there as well, so, while it's, you know, a, a population of one right now, it could definitely grow to additional requests, so we should probably look through, vet it properly.
And those are the exact considerations we had, it really filled into a couple of categories, one is, there had been some history of, like, recreational vehicles being parked, and we want to make it clear that that's not appropriate. But then with, you know, cars and trucks, we want to take the, that exact approach, that if we allow it for this one household, we've got to allow it for everybody, and making sure that we can accommodate that. We have had issues with the Sentinel Building, with plowing, and perhaps, that's something we would even want to encourage, is that during snow events, that there are some city municipal lots that would be available for people to get their cars off of the streets to make plowing easier. So it's, you know, like any situation, once you start kind of picking at it, it gets more complicated than it, than it first look, but I do think we'll have a good answer for this, for this person yet this week.
Thank you. Are we all done with, Morgan? You got what you needed?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you very much. Other business, City Manager John, start?
Not for the workshop.
Okay. Well, can we adjourn, then? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? One favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Hey, that was kind of a nice, I bumped into Luke in the parking lot, and...